Good evening. I'm going to talk into the mic here like I've been told to do. Good evening. I'm going to call this February 20th, 2025, Smamish Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's start out with roll call. John Bachman.
Here.
Mike Presko.
Here.
Mark Bachman is here. That's me. Jay Chakravani.
Here.
Hesham Elkawad.
Here.
Here.
We're missing Suda tonight, and we're also missing our student representative tonight. Sorry about that. Too big of a rush this evening. Okay. Next, to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to make any changes to the agenda? Nope. We'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Approval of the minutes from our January 16th meeting, a little over a month ago. Any change to the meeting minutes from the January 16th meeting? No? Okay. Let's call those approved by common consent. Next is non-agenda public comment. So, tonight's agenda topics, we're going to do, and this is for us too, we're going to do election of chair and vice chair, and we're going to revisit some discussion on Town Center Code amendments and the supplemental environmental impact statement. So, this is the time, three minutes per person, to talk about things other than either of those. Although if you wanted to comment on the election of chair and vice chair, that's probably okay, since we're going to do that first. Anybody want to make public comment? Mr. Stickney, go ahead.
Hello, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney Smamish. My comment tonight is on citywide housing imbalance. I'm going to cover some things that I haven't said before about this topic and revisit some of my work from 2023. A conclusion is, the number of units that I've proposed over the last several months for A, B, and C, affordable and market rate housing shortages over the next 20 years, is roughly 80% of the lowest threshold of internal needs. The effects will be equivalent to roughly one-third of the pace of growth that happened in Smamish from 2000 to 2024. And FYI, about one-sixth of the pace of growth under King County from 1980 to 1999. What is A, B, and C housing? A recap. A is affordable housing with prices from $175,000 to $500,000. B is market rate housing from $500,000 to $1,000,400,000. C are condominiums and townhouses priced at $1.5 million and higher. And D is large, single-family homes over 1.5. Our city has an extreme shortage of A, B, and C housing relative to economic and demographic and workforce housing needs over cycle of life and for future generations. We have a vast oversupply of D housing using these same metrics. Rephrased, our city is way short on A, B, and C and long on D. In mid-2023, I turned in a compilation of three articles to the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force predicated on the numbers I'm proposing for A, B, and C. One was low, one was high, and the other was spot-on. The city will receive about $185 million in one-time revenues. Homeowners that downsize and stay in Smamish, on average, will save between $30,000 and $40,000 a household in lower costs. And the city will net about $15 million a year in net renewable, sustainable revenue. The comments that I sent in today, you can read for yourself. There are several good topics in support of citywide housing imbalance in those comments. But the exciting thing is the city has an opportunity to meet 80% of the lowest threshold of belated shortage, A, B, and C housing need with only one-third of the effects of growth over the last 25 years. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thanks, Paul. Who else?
My name is Kui Goulding, and I've lived in Smamish for 13 years. Just based on time, I am going to discuss a little bit of the Town Center, so I apologize. But I'm here to express my concerns to the Planning Committee and Commission about the increase from 2,000 residential units in the Town Center to 4,000. I am not opposed to the Town Center. I think it is something that could be wonderful for this community. But when I think of that many residential people and cars on the road and bodies, I'm really concerned about what would happen if there's an emergency, and we have to get off this plateau. Are we ready? Do we have the infrastructure? Do we? I mean, I don't think we do. And I really, really am nervous about what would happen. We have trees everywhere. Wildfires are a true thing. You know, they're coming. They're real. And I think that we have to think about that. And I'm asking you, as you're planning and working with City Council, to think about that, because it's something that I need to know, that I have, my safety is very important, as is my friends and family. The other thing is, I'm sure you are aware, but there were 200 written responses sent into the City Council regarding the Town Center, and there were only 17 in favor. 17 people in this community. And I'm very concerned that, once again, the city's not listening to what the citizens want, and I hope that you would dig into that a little further and think about it, because I don't think Smamish is ready for 4,000 residential units. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I probably wasn't going to speak after hearing the last two. I'm Tom Hess. I've lived here over 30 years.
Please use the microphone, so we can hear you. Thanks.
I'm Tom Hess. I've lived here over 30 years.
I got a note here that says, "Talking to the microphone," so.
Okay. So, plus, my kids went to Skyline High School, and I know the last time my kids were around and they were talking, they go, "Things have changed here, and none of it's for the good." When I heard the first speech, A, B, C, and D, this community is D. That's what made us move up here. That's what everyone said, "We'll never change that. We'll never be like Bellevue." Well, this little planning you're doing is exactly what happened to Bellevue. And since you're putting it in the very center of the city, just think it through. People have to come up to the plateau. Whoever's living there is going to go down the plateau. You're not putting it on the edges, so you're just creating a bigger mess. So, that's all I wanted to say, is this really is about D. That's the look and the feel of Smamish. That's what we were trying to preserve, and I could already see it disappearing at the parks. I saw last summer, I like to walk over there a lot, you had the, it was Beaver Lake Park, and you had the, where the little house, that's a house or a community center, and then you've got the open thing. They both had their own music. They were both playing it loud, so they probably weren't hearing each other's, but everybody else walking around was seeing all this. So, there's a lot more of that kind of activities there, rather than it used to be a nice, quiet little park you could walk around in. So, a lot of the improvements I see, they're not making it, keeping Smamish, Smamish. They're making Smamish look like other places that have already existed. And we can look at them, just looking forward to what happened to those communities, you're basically trashing what Smamish was all about, and you're becoming those other communities. So, you could take that in, but I know there's a lot of pressure to do stuff. But I have noticed one thing, that around the country, if they don't like it, they just don't follow the other rules. And when I point out to you, there was actually a governor, a guy running for governor, and he stopped by my house, I think he was running for Republican governor, and I said, "You're looking at the wrong diversity." It's not about black, white. That's all going to work out. In fact, I just, my daughter-in-law, my new daughter-in-law is from India, but that's all going to work out. What really will be impacted is the diversity of where you live and lifestyles. You're wiping out the lifestyle of Smamish. It used to be the communities of 40, 50 homes, they would get together and do stuff. There was, yes, we did have our fireworks show and stuff like that, but those were limited. There was no desire to have one massive, high-density community thing. And then, and then I saw also in another, what was my timer? Oh, sorry. 22 seconds. Sorry. The other thing I too, I noticed is something about supporting your businesses. Well, we've had a lot of businesses up here, and I know why they failed. When you bring a restaurant up here, you're not getting people driving up here, because you don't want them to. You can only live off the current community, so if you don't have the right kind of restaurant, like we had a steak place for a while, which we went there a few times, but I realized families don't do that. Mainly, it's the cost. They're not going to bring their kids there because they're a higher price. They're going to go to the pizza places and stuff like that. So, when you're, I really can't stop what you're doing, but I just let you know, that's what the community's saying. We're losing it all. It's disappearing, and our diversity up here from the rest of King County is disappearing. So, okay. Thanks.
I will remind everybody, this is supposed to be non-agenda comment. I think I'm obligated to say that. Anybody else want to make non-agenda comment?
Was that a non-agenda? Was it a slipper?
That's okay. It's a small group. If we had 100 people in the room, the rules would have to be a little different.
I'm Denise. I've lived here since 2003, and non-agenda-ish, because I'm not talking about codes or EIS, so hopefully it's okay. I just wanted to share that I hope that you can work with the City Council to same concerns, really go back to the first Town Center idea, those original plans, and I know we're at 2,100, and that's okay. Just like Kui said, we understand we have to have something, and that's what King County is recommending, but they're not telling us that we have to do 4,000. And our concern is that we represent a lot of people in Smamish. We get out there, we talk to people. I work for Issaquah School District. We have neighbors over 100 that we've been talking to about this. They just don't want to come to all the meetings. But know that that 200 in the job, or in that, what is it called? Form survey? Those people were representatives of what we're all saying. And what we're saying is, we don't want 4,000 dwellings, nor do we want 150-feet buildings. And like the gentleman that just spoke, that's not what Smamish is about. We don't want Redmond, and we don't want Bellevue. And we feel that the City Council were elected, I told them on Tuesday, I voted for all of them. And whether or not they personally believe if it's a good idea or not, they are representatives of us. And there are so many citizens that are saying they don't want the increase. Just leave it at 2,100 and go with that. And what I've been suggesting is they do an advisory ballot. Do you remember how we did one a long time ago for the YMCA to see if we were going to have a pool? Well, this is much bigger than that. And I feel like we need that before the City Council makes a decision, is to do an advisory ballot of the city so they can really hear from what the residents want. Just like the gentleman said, we know that big restaurants and all these restaurants and shops are not going to make it up here. And like Kui was saying, we're scared about the next national, natural disaster. And a gentleman on Tuesday, who is a developer, was sharing with us, the square footage that's planned is half the size of Bellevue Mall in Smamish. I mean, what are we thinking? So, we've come to the Planning Commission tonight, all of us, to ask you to please be a voice of reason and help talk with everybody else and sort of put the brakes on this new kind of plan and stick to what was agreed on before. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And do we have anybody online?
Yes, we have one hand raised online, a couple, actually. So, Mary Wicker, I'm going to promote you to panelists.
Good evening. This is Mary Wicker for Non-Agenda Comment. I've read a lot of stuff online recently. I don't really have a Facebook, but things have been sent to me. So, I want to go back to something I emailed in to City Council and the Planning Commission on Tuesday. At the bottom, I say, "Let's try an analogy. Smamish has two large, too many large, single-family homes. It's been 85% built with them. That is like eating frosted cake for 85% of your meals. But if you listen to nutritionists and people that know food and well-balanced diet, the foundation of longer living and good health, you need protein, vegetables, grains, fruit, a variety to meet our body's needs and to live in a healthy way. We also need a colorful plate and a variety of offerings to meet our needs." So, you need to think about housing in Smamish in the same way. Smamish had about 35,000 people when it incorporated, and it was, with the King County Pipeline projects, about 10% multifamily. And then, when Kohani was annexed in 2016, Kohani brought in about double that number. So, Smamish went from 6% multifamily to 10% multifamily. And the problem is, is if you don't have those type of units, and we haven't had them for a long time, you basically can't get things done, like teachers and firefighters and policemen. And I'll give you an example. I've been attending Water District meetings at Smamish Plateau Water since about 2015. They have three per month. And one of the reasons they were able to get through the bomb cyclone that we had is they have their people work and they do overtime, and I don't think anybody was without water service. It was like an entire section of a meeting on the operations that they do. The problem they have is, when they hire people, they can't keep them, because they have to live far enough away that they can't come, and then to do emergency services, it's too far to travel back and forth. And they've been looking at that for a number of years. Samplat's lucky, because they have over 50 people, and a lot of them have been there 10, 20, 30, even 40 years. Those people are starting to retire and earn a well-deserved retirement, but they need the water and sewer operators to keep going. And there just isn't a place for those people to live. So, what we need is, we need, well, the affordable was a number that's been given to the city overall, and we need to have smaller market rate housing, like what Paul Stickney talks to. And if we have those, you can build about 4,000 units of those, as opposed to 1,000 units of single-family, if you're looking for traffic impacts, for example. It's about a four-to-one ratio, so 6,000 of those units to about 1,500 single-family units, and 8,000 of those units to about 2,000, 2,000 single-family homes. Sprouling is breaking the city. Maybe you've heard that there's a financial imbalance. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. And did you see we had one more?
Yes, there is one more person who willing to speak. Heather Murphy-Raines.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Heather Murphy-Raines. I've lived here for 25 years, and I'm going to reiterate what I told the Council on Tuesday. We came here for the forest, the schools, and the small-town feel, and I attended the early planning sessions. And when we came here, we, we came here to the planning sessions for the movie theater, the post office, the hardware stores, restaurants, and outdoor pools, senior centers, senior centers, and places to gather. These are all really exciting ideas, and we still want those. And I'm actually for the 2,000 living units, but I'm not for these 10-story housing complexes and 4,000 living units. In fact, even back then, we knew that 228th was landlocked, limited by geography, far from freeways. We knew we couldn't handle that level of growth, and we chose Smamish the way it was because we loved its small-town feel. I don't feel this serves our community, and I feel that we need to serve the community we have now. There is a place for affordable housing. I'm not sure that it's piled up in the middle of our community. I think that closer to public transit and to freeways would be a better option. I do urge you to read every one of those 200 responses, because I did. I spent the time to read every one of them, and I don't think that this fits the character of our community to build these towers. I also am very, very concerned about the gridlock on 228th, the natural evac, any natural disasters that will come from earthquakes and wildfires. I urge you to read the 2019 annex that was submitted from the emergency planner that likened our risk of wildfire risk to paradise. Actually, we had 1.7x the risk, and that was in 2019. So, I cannot imagine what our risk will be if we put all this development in as it stands. I am hearing that we don't even have the capacity and the fire trucks to do this. I'm wondering how this is going to be funded. And at this point, when we're talking about utility taxes and not having the budget to put this onerous, these onerous taxes on the taxpayers and the residents, and then, I don't know, this is, this just doesn't seem to serve the community right now as it stands. And it doesn't serve the community to put this gridlock, the overburdening of the sewers, the water, the schools. So, I would really urge you to read every one of those 200 comments and consider what's best for the community that's here now, not just for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Anybody else?
No more hands.
Okay. Next, we're going to move on to, well, first, I'd encourage everybody to stick around for the presentation and the discussions, which I'm sure you're hanging on the edge of your seat, but just in case, hang, stick around for it, and you'll have another opportunity to comment if you'd like. Also, apologies to Commissioner Sayad Sababian. I was working so hard to remember to say that Suda was gone. When I called roll, I blanked on its name. Yikes. Sorry about that, Sayad. So, next, we'll do our new business item for this evening, which is election of chair and vice chair. And I think all of you have been through this a few times, if I'm remembering right, and some of us quite a few times. So, basically, pretty simple, this is how we'll do it, is we'll take nominations for chair, and then, if anybody who's been nominated wants to make any comments, they can do that. And then, we'll vote based on the order of the nominations, and then, we'll do vice chair. So, pretty simple. Any, any nominations for chair?
Mr. Chair, I want to nominate you for running another year.
Any other nominations? I guess I shouldn't say it that way. Any additional nominations? Additional nominations?
And you don't need a second either, so.
You know, I don't think technically we need a second. If someone would like to second it for fun, that's, you're welcome to, but anyone else?
I'd like to second the nomination.
Okay. Do we have a quorum here? Will this even count? All right. Those in favor of Mark Bachman for chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Nominations for vice chair. Nominee Mike Presko.
And I'll second the nomination.
Any additional nominations? Any comments from the nominee?
Happy to do that.
Common nominee from chair, first.
Yeah. I don't have any comments. Okay. Let's vote on that. All those in favor of Mike Presko for vice chair, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. We're going to maintain the status quo. All right. One more year. Yeah, that's right. Next year at this time, things will be changing. So, let's go to our main topic for this evening, which a lot of people spoke about a little bit, and that is our discussion about the Town Center and the SEIS. Matt?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Matt Brandmeyer. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to kind of go over the comments that we received on the SEIS scope. We also received direction from City Council Tuesday night, which, you know, I'll brief you here in a second. Tuesday night, we met with City Council. We presented essentially the same presentation. We provided them with all the responses. We received 200-plus comments on the scope. We sent out the scope in early January. The deadline to submit comments was the end of the month, end of January. And then, you know, we've evaluated those and developed this presentation. The City Council, they were cautious, but they did ask us to move forward with the scope as presented. They're interested in evaluating another alternative. I'll speak to these alternatives in slides, upcoming slides. And they're also interested in seeing the study results. And what I mean by that is, this whole process is about study. It's about studying capacity and studying environmental impacts, and then, potentially, you know, how would we mitigate those impacts? So, what we are going to do is, once we receive all these comments, we're going to study, and then, we're going to present essentially a draft SEIS to the community. But the City Council hasn't made a decision as of yet. They would like to see the study and then move forward from there. So, I want to be clear about that. The primary topics for tonight's meeting, I'll go over real quickly the project goals and the engagement history, a few slides on that, and then, I'll get to the comments and kind of the process of kind of moving forward over the next couple of months. From the Planning Commission, we're excited to hear your thoughts and get feedback. We have the direction. We'd like some additional feedback before we continue the work. And feedback of the community, of course, as well. So, overall, the project goals for the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment are to simplify and recalibrate the city's approach to affordable housing. That's one of the big topics we need to incorporate. We just had a comprehensive plan process that incorporated state mandates into, into the comprehensive plan. We need to do that now with the Town Center Plan. We would also like to clarify the Town Center Code. There's a lot of language that could be essentially simplified, that, you know, if we work and also streamline kind of the administration, some of our processes that are identified in that code. So, we want to get to work on that as well. Those are the goals of the project. We've had at least eight, there's more, I think there's more than that, eight meetings to kind of discuss this topic. Now, a lot of that was under the umbrella of the Comprehensive Plan Update, but we specifically talked about Town Center with the intent of moving forward with this process after. And you can see on the screen, we've had, you see, three City Council, or three Planning Commission meetings, four City Council meetings. We had Town Center Open House over the last 18 months, and this process continues. The end of this process will be, we think, around October. We're planning, you know, future meetings in every step along the way. So, we're right at the beginning of this process. We're the end of February, the end of October, and that would be a two-year process overall, which is, I think, you know, deserves this kind of attention overall. So, this isn't a new topic. We've been discussing this for a while. We're kind of at the mid-stage. We've, stage one and stage two, were essentially to do the reviews, do a lot of study, kind of develop, you know, get the data together and start having conversations. At this point, we're going to start drafting updates. In order to do that, we initiated the scoping process and the overall. In order to do that, we initiated the scoping process and the overall, uh, draft SEIS process. Um, so we're about at the midpoint and this really kicks off the, the SEIS process. This meeting and the things that we've been doing, you know, over the past couple of months, kicks off this process. So the, the question is, you know...
Let me just, sorry to, just, you, you've talked about this process and I think there's two elements to that. One is the code changes within Town Center.
Yes.
Which is a key part that I know that we've talked about. The other part is the additional potential for capacity and height. And are those, in your mind, when you say this process, one of the same or related but different?
They're, they're different. Um, so we have three different things happening, kinda all at the same time. Um, one informs the other, essentially. The SEIS will inform the plan update. It'll also inform, and the plan update will inform the code update. So even though the, you know, they are separate processes, they can move forward, um, at the same time because they're all informing one another. Yeah. You're welcome. Um, yeah, so the SEIS process is, this is a supplemental environmental impact statement. Uh, it would essentially amend the existing, um, EIS, the existing environmental impact statement for the Town Center, which was developed in 2007, um, and whereon, after that, they, uh, adopted the plan, the Town Center Plan in 2008. Um, and that's been, let me do the math. That's close to 20 years. It's 18 years now. Um, and so there's a lot of changes. There's a lot of new information. Um, and when you're kind of encountering, you know, a planning process like that and there's some, you know, that amount of time has passed, it's a good idea to update your, your EIS as well, and that's what we're doing here. And the whole process and the purpose behind the process is to ensure that the city is being transparent, um, that we're getting, um, you know, public feedback and we're kinda understanding what the issues are. Overall, we're identifying issues, we're, we're offering mitigation, but we first need to understand what those issues are, what the concerns are. So. As I said, this is the kickoff for the SEIS process. We're at that very first, um, step. Overall, there's about, there are six steps in this process. Um, we're at the beginning. I will kind of explain each of these steps, um, as we go along here. Uh, right now, we're establishing the scope and this is the point where we get, you know, the, kind of the first round of public feedback. From there, we will identify the impacts and we will propose mitigation. And so those are a couple sta- steps on the staff and consultant level that we're gonna be working on over the next couple of months. Uh, I think the, um, the meeting is tentatively scheduled to review, uh, the, s- draft SEIS is in early May. We're going to have a workshop at the end of April and then early May, uh, we will bring this back to the Planning Commission and the City Council for review. Thereafter, um, well, during that, we will have the draft SEIS, disclose our findings, um, and then move forward to the final SEIS. That final and the decision-making is going to, um, be a topic of a conversation, but ultimately will conclude, we think, in October of this year. And there's opportunities for public feedback through this entire process. The draft SEIS, there's another opportunity for comment where we will send out the notification and, uh, receive formal, you know, comment through that. For this round, for the, uh, for the scoping step, um, and I do want to say that this step isn't actually required. Um, it's something that we wanted to do in order to kind of get the feedback that we did receive. Um, but we essentially went through all the minimum standards for, um, for notification for an SEIS. Uh, that includes posting in the Seattle Times. Uh, we, you know, mailed the, um, uh, relevant, um, agencies. We sent out, uh, letters, you know, within 500 feet of, uh, of the Town Center. Um, we have several email databases that we use to, to send out the notice. Um, so, you know, it was far and wide just to kind of promote the, uh, the awareness of this project overall. As mentioned, we did receive over 200 comments. Um, and that kind of is within five areas. You see 62% of, of respondents, um, you know, spoke to road capacity and traffic. 39% spoke to school capacity. 36% spoke to infrastructure and utility concerns. Uh, 26% said that, you know, the proposal was not in line with the character of the city. And then 24%, you know, had stormwater and environmental concerns. And as mentioned, there's gonna be opportunities for feedback as we move forward. Uh, so we, around those comments, we developed four different themes, uh, which I'm going to, uh, go through individually, uh, in the next slides coming up. Those themes are traffic, transportation impacts, school and public service capacity, environmental and stormwater concerns, and then height and aesthetic considerations. For traffic and, uh, transportation, we, we heard about congestion on 228th, um, in surrounding roads. Uh, there was, there were comments about inadequate transit options. Um, and the fact that if you have higher density without transit, everyone is gonna be car-dependent. Uh, again, and we've heard this tonight, uh, concerns about emergency evacuation, uh, if there's a natural disaster, wildfire, earthquake, extreme weather, that sort of thing. Uh, there's also concern about bike-ped infrastructure. Um, just essentially that our current roads are dominated by car traffic and, uh, bike and ped has kind of been an afterthought. I will say that we are, um, the Public Works Department is kicking off a, a bike-ped, um, planning process. I think it's Public Works, maybe Department of Parks. Evan, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah, Public Works.
It is Public Works, yeah. So they're developing a bike-ped plan kind of alongside this, um, you know, this year. Um, there's also concerns about generally the lay of the land, essentially. It's, you know, hard to build transportation infrastructure when you have, you know, challenging elevations and terrain, um, you know, then there's also the fact that, you know, it's kinda hilly in the, um, in the Town Center area and it's, be difficult for some people to walk or even bike. In regard to school and public services, we, uh, received comments about overcrowding, about the capacity of, of the local schools. Um, this is, the Town Center is entirely within the Lake Washington School District. Um, it doesn't really, it doesn't involve Issaquah School District or Snoqualmie. Um, and that's something that we'll be evaluating. Um, concern about essentially strained emergency services, um, and then also water, sewer, utility capacity overall. There's also concern about stormwater runoff, drainage issues, um, you know, kind of the impacts on the natural watersheds, uh, concern about the loss of tree canopy, uh, impact on local wildlife, um, and then concern about air quality and this heat island effect, that low-lying, um, ozone that, you know, you'll get from cars and, and that sort of thing. So concern about that. In regard to height and aesthetics, and this is, you know, that 150-foot building height, concern that that would impact essentially the views. It could, uh, create shade, shadow, uh, and overall, the impact on neighborhood aesthetics. There's concern about light pollution and glare, you know, from the taller buildings. If you go higher, you're gonna have windows that, you know, are lighted at night and you would be able to see that. It might have an impact if you're nearby, if you live nearby. And then also, there were a lot of comparisons, uh, comparisons made about, you know, kind of Bellevue and Redmond and that the Sumamish doesn't want to be that. We don't want to be downtown Bellevue. And so that's also something that we'll be taking a look at. Uh, we have talked to a few agencies. We have a long list, I want to say 30, 40 agencies that we, um, send notices to and then the ones that are germane to this proposal, we will, uh, be talking to individually. We're, uh, hosting a workshop, a workshop with the agencies in a couple of months. Um, but we're gonna be talking to the agencies individually. Um, I just talked to the fire, the Eastside Fire District yesterday. We're going to, we're committed to work together through this process. Um, we did hear back from the Water District. We heard back from the Snoqualmie Tribe. We heard back from, uh, the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And essentially, they're, you know, they're going to help us, you know, kind of work through this process and, and they'll be, you know, we'll be sharing information and getting feedback from them as well. So I mentioned earlier in the early, earlier slide that, um, the City Council said to move forward with the, uh, the alternative. There are essentially two alternatives that, that are being proposed with this. Um, one is the one that we, um, that, that we posted in the notice and the other one is essentially a no-action alternative. In the original EIS that was created in 2007, they looked at four different alternatives, including, uh, the 4,000-unit option. So that's already, that has been studied. That was studied, you know, about 20 years ago. Um, and this is why we're setting out to do that again. That no-action alternative is basically a baseline scenario. Um, it would identify impacts if everything would remain unchanged as it is today, as the plan is today, not actually what's out in the field today. I should clarify that. And of course, you know, that, they all come with their own set of impacts and appropriate mitigation member, uh, measures. And, uh, we'll be sure for both of those alternatives to measure both. As mentioned, one of the alternatives is this no-action and, uh, that's currently, that's, it was the preferred alternative, uh, from the 2007 EIS. Uh, that included a capacity of 2,000 units, existing caps on commercial remain in place, um, and then the current zoning and design standards would apply as well. There is, um, in the, in the Town Center Plan, I mentioned that, that we had evaluated in 2007 of the 4,000-unit scenario and they, they landed on the 2,000-unit scenario. I'm not sure what all those discussions entailed, uh, but they did include in the plan that, and they suggested that if you get to, when you get to one-third of those 2,000 units, you should evaluate, reevaluate. That's what we're doing now. So we are at one-third. There's, you know, essentially built, there's about 400 units built. Uh, there's 300 units that are permitted now and then I want to say there's another six or 700 units that are in the pipeline. Uh, so that would bring us to around 21, 2200 units of the 2,000. Uh, so that's moving forward. That's all moving forward right now. So, you know, surpassing that one-third, that really is, you know, we see that as a trigger to kind of reevaluate and start this process again. Alternative one, this is the action alternative. This is the one that we, we posted the notice for and that is, you know, to accommodate up to 4,000 units and then also potentially to increase building heights in the, um, in the core area. And that's the A1 zone. That's about, I don't know, 22 acres, um, you know, around Fourth Street, you know, west of, uh, 228th on the west side. Um, that, it would only apply to that. It would be very limited, um, but it's up for discussion, obviously. Um, that we would also update the Town Center Code and we've been looking at, we've talked about this at a previous meeting, uh, kind of a hybrid form-based code. Um, and I talked about that, about planning for the public realm, uh, which, uh, you know, the code that we have now doesn't really do that. It doesn't pay a whole lot of attention to sidewalks and, and town squares and plazas and that sort of thing. Outdoor dining, if there are restaurants, you know, all of those things aren't really spoken to. I mean, they are, but they're not, it's not a focal point. For any Town Center, that public realm is a focal point, uh, for the plan. And that's something that the, the form-based code would do. And then also streamline the administration. Part of the issue that we have right now is we essentially have two steps in entitlement. There's a UZDP and then you have the, the commercial site development permit, um, or plan. And those are essentially redundant steps that, um, that deserve, that need to be evaluated. We need to kind of determine, you know, what is the most effective and efficient use of staff's time and then also the developer's time as well. Now, I mentioned that in 2007, they studied 4,000 units and then there was some kind of compromise. There was some discussion and that's how they came to the 2,000-unit scenario. There is certainly room to do that here, that it doesn't have to be, you know, 4,000 units. It could fall between that no-action alternative and the action alternative. We're also gonna, going to be looking at, um, you know, land use, you know, certainly housing, you know, this urban forum, shadow analysis, uh, overall the impacts, uh, to land use patterns. You know, as mentioned, the transportation will be evaluating traffic and parking. Um, the city has, we have traffic consultants. We have an entire model for, as far as how traffic operates, you know, within the city. That'll be updated to evaluate kind of different scenarios as we move forward. And then also, I mentioned, you know, the impacts on streets, walking, biking, transit, all of that will be evaluated. The next steps, as I've mentioned, is to develop, publish the draft SEIS. Um, you know, we're going to have a review, uh, a public comment period. Um, at that phase, we'll, we will respond to each and every comment that we receive. That's a requirement of this process. And then, you know, the last part is to develop and publish the final EIS. So that's upcoming. That'll be happening over the next few months. Um, tentative meetings, so you see the two February meetings up top for the scoping. I mentioned the first week of May that we're going to have meetings with the Planning Commission, City Council to review the draft SEIS and review the draft plan amendments. Um, in June, we're going to review draft zoning and development code, uh, amendments. And then, once we get all that sorted out, we're going to start the review and adoption process. That'll take place this fall and hopefully, um, be concluded in October. These are all tentative dates. I did want to mention that, uh, the Planning Commission is, uh, we are looking at an August date for a meeting. I know that you normally don't meet in August, so, um, we're gonna ask that we, um, take this special circumstance in order to meet. We're also planning several community workshops. Uh, I mentioned the draft SEIS workshop at the end of April. Uh, we're gonna meet with property owners and we're talking to property owners right now within the Town Center. Uh, we'll have a workshop in June for them. The partner agencies, a workshop in June. Um, and then we'll have a workshop going over the, the draft zoning and development code review in July. Plenty of meetings coming up, plenty of opportunities for public comment. Um, and we will continue this throughout the process, essentially. Uh, I do want to say that, um, you know, we are updating our, our webpage for the Town Center. Um, there's a place for the, the plan and code update. Uh, the address, the URL is www.sumamish.us/tcamendment. If you go there, we're posting, we're regularly, almost daily, posting new information as it comes in. Uh, we have a few sections on this process and the kind of explaining the SEIS overall, explaining what the scope is. Uh, there's a whole resource page on all the work that's been done in the past. Uh, and you can see the, the Town Center Plan there. You can see a stormwater study. You can see, um, the final EIS is posted there. Uh, we're also posting a FAQ that, um, hopefully will answer a lot of questions that, you know, we've heard through this process. The overall message, I want to be sure, you know, that we are studying these things and, you know, we've had a lot of comments, you know, what about this, what about that? That is part of this process is to evaluate, to study proposed mitigation measures. That is part of this process, is to evaluate, to study proposed mitigation measures, and essentially move forward a recommendation. So with that, yeah, that's the last slide. Happy to hopefully answer any questions. I know David Pyle is on line two. He's been under the weather, but he may join us.
So, don't say anything bad about him since he's on the call.
Yeah, don't say anything bad.
We can see him.
Yeah, there we go, makes it a little harder. So Matt, can I ask you to start out with, how should we, how would it be helpful for us to proceed with this conversation? And what I mean by that is, I'm just thinking about that there's the opportunity for us to drill straight into details 10 feet deep, that really the answer is, we don't know that yet, I'm assuming in the, for the most part, like, you know, so is the 150-foot building going to be round or square and be purple, or is it going to be yellow? Or I mean, it's making crazy stuff up there, but there is the opportunity for us to dive into a lot of real details that may not be useful now, but, but what is the right level of conversation at this point? I'm thinking, you want feedback about what we think about what's been discussed and questions related to the process? Is that kind of where we're going with this?
I think it would be helpful, I mean, if you express, if you share concerns that we've heard, number one, but then two, what you think should go into like the evaluation? You know, for example, for building height, do, should we, is it helpful to review kind of comparable buildings? Is it helpful, you know, what would, you know, as far as helping you in your decision, and as far as kind of your understanding of the proposal, what would help you evaluate that? That would be, I think, a starting point.
Okay. Who would like to go, actually, Syed, you're going to be my honorary go-first person?
[laughing].
Are you ready to go first?
I have almost two and a half pages of questions.
How about let's just start with the first page?
If you don't mind, should we start kind of talking in, in general, and I, I have a number of questions before getting into building heights and nitty-gritty part of the discussion. For instance, let me give you one example. Mr. Stickney brought up four categories of the housing. Can you elaborate on that? Do you have the numbers, percentages? Can you educate us? What is the market composition right now as far as four different A through Ds? What do we have now? Do you know?
Yeah, I'm, I understand Mr. Stickney's comments, but, you know, that's, the scope is overall, kind of the housing mix, and, you know, we're trying to incorporate affordable and diverse housing within the town center. So I'm thinking that we're going to pick up a lot of those comments, you know, as we move forward with this SEIS.
Okay, next question. I'm familiar with the EIS.
Yeah.
Are you going to be covering all the elements that normally cover in the EIS and a D, in SEIS? Or only on a selective basis? Because what I heard, that you're going to be focusing on the land use and to some extent on the transportation. So my question is back, what is the difference in your mind between a typical EIS and SEI that you're going to be doing?
I don't know that I'm equipped to answer that, David can help.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just wanted, okay, always wanted to do a sound check. So the first step that would be taken would be to do a gap analysis between the previous final environmental impact statement that was done, and all the background documentation that was produced as part of the draft environmental impact statement back in 2006 and 2007, and we would contrast that to current conditions. And we would then contrast that to the proposed action or actions to identify where there might be a different impact or a different, a different, I want to say, a change in condition. So ultimately, it's likely that all elements will be covered. However, if there is no change, and it's something that is really not, not relevant to the, to the scope or the change in the scope, then it would be, it would be noted, but it probably wouldn't be studied, if that makes sense. So I anticipate that.
Since you mentioned, David, since you mentioned the gap, I'm, I'm familiar with the gap analysis. So would that cover not only the housing and the transportation, it's going to cover environmental, utilities, drainage issues and so forth in respect to the gap?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
The elements of the environment are defined in WAC 19711.
And typically, when we look at the EIS, usually it's a, one is no build, and then the other one is build alternative, this is what we're talking about. But sometimes there, there is a need to have another alternative. What was the reason that you didn't want to look at the build alternatives under certain conditions, and then another one that, just for the safe comparison?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Why you don't have the second, there is no second alternative, you call it the no-build as an alternative? I was wondering if there is a need.
Right, it's the, well, it's the, it's the current, it's the current plan and code alternative, it's the no-change alternative is, is the no-action alternative. I wouldn't call it a no-build alternative because it still results in construction happening, it just happens under the plan and code that is in place today. The, the action alternative is consistent with the previously identified, and I'm actually in the EIS right now, I have to remember what it was called, ch-ch-ch, almost there. There was one of the, it was the high, the high-intensity alternative, I think, is what it was called.
It was the, the commercial alternative.
Right, bear with me, I'm actually scrolling up. Yeah, it was, alternative one, commercial focus. So the, the reason why we are, we are studying something similar to that is because that was already covered back in 2006 and 2007, when the environmental impact statement work was done, and we were able to do a supplement in order to do a gap. It basically results in a gap analysis and identification of what's changed, and it contrasts that against the work that was done with the draft EIS back in 2006 and 2007.
And when we're doing the SEIS, what is the time horizon on it? Does that time horizon match as a TNP of 2044, or it's going to be 10 years from now? What is the time horizon that you're looking at?
Yeah, so in this case, we're not actually, we're not changing a target, we're changing capacity. So what this does is it changes the studied capacity of the town center. If, if the city council was to take action, and let's say they were to decide to raise, let's say they, they came up with the final draft, the final supplemental EIS resulted in an increase in density by 1,000 units in the town center. Let's say that's what they ended up with as their hybrid alternative. And let's say that that then was adding 1,000 units to the town center that was studied. What that means is that the capacity, the studied capacity that is available for development in the town center would go up from 2,000 units today to 3,000 units. It doesn't change the city's growth target in any way. All it does is change the capacity. The, the challenge that we run into is that the cities, the options to promote diverse and affordable housing in the town center have largely been exhausted. All we're left with going forward for the balance of what will be built out in the town center is 10% affordable housing at 80% area median income. The affordable housing bonus pool has been exhausted, the TDR credits that resulted in additional density, and 10% of that being affordable were, have also been all purchased up and are all accounted for in future projects that are going through entitlement today. So anything beyond that that would be built would largely be town homes that are 10% and 80% AMI. So the city council has a goal, and, you know, I, I'll say, just right now, I want to make sure that everyone is aware, the reason why we're doing this is because we recognize as a city that there is, the, the city, you know, not just Sammamish, the region and Sammamish are facing a housing shortage and a housing challenge, and that we have an housing imbalance, and that we would like to see smaller or affordable units of different types be built in the city. But in order to do that, we need to work with those that build the units to find a way to make them feasible to build. And we can't, we can't just say someone has to build this type of unit, you have to actually figure out a way to make it financially feasible for them to do so. So what we're looking to do is to bundle incentive units with smaller units and with affordable units in order to see that type of housing be built. The city council's work plan includes a goal number five, which is to increase the delivery of housing. I'll go ahead and share my screen, so you can see this is straight out of the city council's approved work plan that came from the work plan and budgeting exercises they did in the fall of 2024, and came from the city council's retreat that just happened earlier this month. You can see here that directly out of the city council's work plan, on which the city departments are then responsible for, for bringing forward work product and finding solutions to address their goals, is goal number five, housing. And you can see here that it specifically says facilitate housing options that meet a diverse range of incomes and needs. And then if you go down to goal number 5.3, I mean, 5.1 says it, encourage and incentivize diverse housing types and track the success of those. Then down under 5.3, update and operationalize the town center plan. Update the town center plan with strategies, incentives, and programs that accelerate the development of low and moderate income housing within the town center area while increasing opportunities for commercial, civic, and open space amenities to better enhance the community. You can see it's a tall order, we don't, we're, we're not dismissive of how significant this is as, as an issue that we're trying to address in the community and how challenging it is. But we are tasked with doing this, and it's not something that a department came up with on its own. We're, we're being responsive and supportive of the city council's goals and their work plan that they have assigned us with the budget they've given us, and we're here to start that work and take this on, and we're really trying to engage the community at this point to try and make sure everyone's aware of, of what we're up to.
So you talk extensively about the, the supply side, can you elaborate on the demand side? Do we have the numbers as far as the demand and the different, different types?
Yeah, so the demand side is really based on the market. The city does not build the housing, and, you know, in, in my opinion, it would be a futile exercise to go and identify what the snapshot of demand is today. We don't control in-migration or out-migration, we don't control the jobs housing balance locally or in the region, we don't control regional investment in infrastructure, we don't control housing trends, we don't control lending. There is a, a wide range of factors that we simply don't control, and we don't build housing. We do control land use, and we can provide flexibility in order to ensure that if the market wants to build it, that they can. There is no sense in quantifying it because that information would simply be outdated tomorrow. So we don't see a need to do that type of study. We, we do have, we have studied through our housing diversification toolkit, otherwise known as our housing action plan, and we have studied the housing balance as part of the comprehensive plan, and I would direct you to the housing diversification toolkit, which was adopted, you, you reviewed it as, as a commission, and the city council adopted it, and I would direct you to the city's housing element of its comprehensive plan, which you reviewed and the council adopted, which has quite extensive information on housing balances in the city and where the housing needs are.
And the last question on that, back to the issue of the time horizon. So you said that you're going to be looking at, basically updating the, the previous EIS study, which was done in 2007, right?
Correct.
So you're going to compare it with the current 2025 situation as far as the land use, as far as the transportation and housing and everything else. But aren't you going to be looking at, let's say, 10 years from now, with the building or putting 4,000 units, what would be the implication of such a change in the land use and the transportation related?
Yeah, typically, an EIS is not really time-based, it's more based on, along the, the concept of what would happen if you did this, right? It's not what would happen if you did a little bit of this every year. So it, it's really focused more on what would the impacts be, and what would the mitigation measures be that could be applied if the action was to be taken? We can't control the market rate of development, we, we are, we are obligated to respond to the market rate of development, but we can't control it. So if, if capacity was available and the, the market was there to build it, the city would be obligated to, to service it with a level of service that we have set with our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have lots of questions, but I want to give everybody else.
Yeah, let's jump over to John.
I yield to Mike. All right, but I, I do have a few things. So one, I, I thought, actually, I was, I went through all the comments, and I was kind of writing down themes, and so I really appreciate the work that you and, you know, Framework did to pull those themes together. I think it captured the 200-plus comments pretty well. However, if I go one step higher, there are many comments that read as though it was a done deal, that, that council had decided to increase the numbers as a target to 4,000, and had decided to go 150 feet. Now, I know that that's not the case, but this is a, I guess, a, a request in terms of how we're communicating, to think about both how, you know, the announcements were made, how the wording was put in the request for comments, and how future communications go out, so that it's really clear to the public that, you know, we haven't set these as targets and we want to have that 4,000.
Yeah.
Clearly, it was a misunderstanding, so that's a caution. The second, at that kind of higher level, and this, this played off of a number of the comments, including what was said at the city council meeting the other night, what are the benefits to the residents, current residents? So not, you know, the people that may want to move in, and that's unclear. And in fact, it might be nice if we could talk a little bit about that this evening. You know, what, what are the benefits to me as a current resident of Sammamish if we were to, after the SEIS, go and say, set higher targets for town center? And then I do think that there was some conversations implied in those comments, and certainly some of the conversation the other night, about maybe having another alternative. So there's the no-change alternative, there's the alternative that has 4,000 plus 150 feet, maybe there's an alternative, and I don't know if the SEIS could do this easily, where, you know, because my read was that the most vehement comments, including from some of the concerns from like Mayor Howe, was like, ooh, 150 feet, that like gave me, like twisted my stomach aside. And then I thought a little bit about it, and maybe, you know, getting the data would be helpful. So just food for thought, whether there should be another alternative that is considered that may look at, you know, maybe lower targets or eliminate the idea about the 150 feet. So those are just general. I have another fairly high comment, and I hope this doesn't sound like, you know, hey, a planning commissioner should really know this, but I think I'd like to know better. The outputs of the SEIS, like what would those outputs look like? And specifically, let's say we do these various, the studies done, is it possible that the output, because we're now looking at the current conditions for these alternatives versus, you know, almost 20 years ago, is it possible to say, oh, the capacity really isn't as high as we might think, maybe the capacity's 1,800 units instead of 4,000? So that, two parts in that question, one is just in general, what are the kind of outputs that we could expect as a community from the SEIS? And then could it be that one of those outputs would say, ah, you know, we actually need smaller capacity than what we had been assuming since 2007? What do you think?
You have several questions there.
I had a couple of just food for thought, but the last one was a question about the output.
Let me first, yeah, on, on the messaging. Let me first, yeah, on the messaging, you know, we as planners, we use a lot of acronyms. We use a lot of, you know, industry terms, and I agree that we can improve on that. And, you know, the the idea that this was a done deal, I, I think, you know, we could have leaned into that this is more of a proposal and we're looking for ideas and comments and that's what we're looking for input. I do want to say, and sorry to be a little off topic, but that difference between, you know, the growth target, and this is one of the main comments that we received, and this capacity analysis through the SEIS, that's, that's a major, you know, difference. And we heard a lot about, well, it's a 4,000 unit growth target. That's not the case at all. What we're doing is evaluating the impacts of 4,000 units. That growth target is different, and there is timing to that. That's, that's a 20 year plan. There is no timing associated with, you know, the town center. And if you look at kind of how it's grown over time and some of the things that are being planned, you know, you're looking at, you know, maybe 25 to 50 units a year, you know, and, you know, as far as where we are or where we'll be in five years, you know, those 1,100 units I mentioned being built. And so if you kind of extrapolate that and kind of think about what is the future of town center and what is the demand out there and is it going to be the same as the same experience that we've had over the last 20 years? Yeah, you're not reaching, you know, 4,000 units for a very long time. So, you know, and a lot of things have the ability to change and catch up and and all of that. So I, I don't think, so David, can you help me with the benefits and how the alternative would work?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I go back to sort of where this all started and why the council added goal number five to the work plan in the first place is that in the years preceding, you know, 2022, 2023, even before that, that we'd been hearing as a community that people really wanted alternative forms of housing in their community in Samamish so that they could see their kids move back and have a starter home to buy or that they could, they could downsize and move into a condominium or a town home because people didn't want to continue to live in a, the large home that they had bought and raised their family or that we had, you know, smaller units for an individual who was a professional who didn't really, didn't have a family, it was a single person who was fine living in a studio. And really as a, as a community that that we have, you know, and this is studied in the housing action or housing diversification toolkit and in the housing elements of the comprehensive plan, that that we have an imbalance and we need to find a way to start to produce alternative styles of housing and to produce affordable housing. And in order to do that, we need to consider what our tools are. And I think that where the biggest misunderstanding is in in what we did, and I agree with what Matt said, you know, we definitely need to lean into this and we are starting to ramp up a lot more messaging and do a lot better with that, is that this is not, the, the, the source of this is not an ask to consider raising the the number of units by 2,000 units to 4,000 as a by right entitlement so that we could see the developer just build up to 4,000 market rate units. What this is, is an ask for us to find a way to, understanding that we can't necessarily downzone, there's legal implications there, we can't necessarily take away the base zoning that's there, but what can we do to augment it if if the additional units that are, that are delivered beyond the base are necessarily associated with diverse and affordable housing? I think the easiest way to think about this, and and this is just an example, don't, don't get connected to this or, or, you know, think of this as binding. I'm just throwing out an example for, for, you know, discussion purposes, is that, let's say, anything beyond the base 2,000 units that were already studied and have put in place as part of the FEIS and, and, you know, were intended to to be built, that anything above that, let's say we went to 3,000 units instead, so we add 1,000 units. So let's say the first, you know, 250 units of that are, are market units that can be built at any size and those are the, those are the carrots for the builder. But anytime they build one of those, they have to also be building a, a unit less than 1,000 square feet and they also have to be building a unit that is at 80% AMI and they also have to be building a unit that is at 50% AMI. And what that ends up with is a blend of housing that is built and delivered and they can't just build all, all the market rate housing first and then promise to build the other stuff later. They have to actually come in and show as part of their development proposals how they are building this stratified, different typologies of housing if they want to take advantage of the carrot. So what we're trying to find out is, you know, according to the, the direct, the direction from the council is to study strategies, incentives and programs that accelerate the development of low and moderate income housing in addition to diverse housing types, different size units. So that's really what's happening here. It's not at all about raising the, the cap in the town center to four, by 2,000 units to 4,000 just to allow more market rate housing to be built. That is not at all what the city is interested in doing. So I just want to make sure we all understand that because I think that, that's a bit of a different conversation than the conversation that could happen if people were, you know, if, if they're, if the city was moving forward with just studying, raising market rate housing.
I'm going to jump in. That's kind of helpful, but not crisp enough about the benefits, frankly. And so one thing, the benefits to the current residents and to what, what people have been asking for as opposed to, I'm really concerned about traffic, I'm really concerned about this.
If I could, so we're, I mentioned we're developing the FAQ on the website. That, I think that's a perfect question for the FAQ.
Absolutely.
I'd like to kind of between, you know, our team is kind of develop a more kind of thorough and thoughtful answer.
And I love that, and I think that makes sense just in terms of advice, in terms of how some of that messaging might be fashioned with, with the time that it takes to do it really well. And one thing that came to my mind was, David, earlier you said, for the no change alternative, at best, we can get 10% of the units at 80% or less AMI. That's, that's a cap. And the fact that we have heard feedback from the community about wanting lower cost housing, that puts a cap on that, right? So this study will give us the potential ability to increase the number of affordable housing, something like that, right? Tied to that is, I did have a question, and this is again, food for thought, that no change alternative, the as is, it included basically the current code. So I did wonder if there was a no change prime that said, change the code, but keep the 2,000 units the same, food for thought. I, I don't expect a full answer for that right now, but that might enable maybe, I don't know, being able to get more than that 10% at 80% AMI, okay? And I have only one other comment here, and that is, I would suggest in terms of the scope for the SEIS, there are the themes, and transportation was one of those four major themes, right? And under transportation, it included basically if there's an emergency. I suggest separating and creating another theme that says disaster response or preparedness because, you know, transportation, when there's a wildfire blowing through or like the bomb cyclone, everything changes. And one of the, actually, a theme of the concerns, and you did catch that, was about what happens if, you know, the, the Paradise, California, and we're now, you know, outside of LA? And that feels to me like a special enough case that it ought to be brought out as a separate theme. Would we be able to handle additional capacity in town center under a disaster scenario? So just food for thought in that in terms of the scoping. So those are my comments.
In the interest of being the timekeeper, I'll suggest that ideally we'd about have another half hour and then we would want to do, try to move on. So just for awareness, how about Isham, did you have some comments?
Sure. I agree with all the comments that I heard from my fellow commission members from the community. And if not all, most of the issues that were raised, it thinks that I actually personally previously voiced, it's concerns, it's true concerns, but it's very good and I'm glad that you will be studying this and coming back with more of a technical study and ways to mitigate the risks. And I'll, I'll just keep hoping that we will come up with something that either convinces that there's no risk or will convince the city council that this is absolutely not in the best interest of the community. One of the environmental impacts that I recommend that we add, it's healthcare. I have not heard anything about how are we going to mitigate that? There are only limited number of clinics within Samamish here, and I know that if I pick the phone now and call any of these primary care clinics to schedule an appointment, it will be three or four months out. And if we can figure out a way to add, even if we don't double the, the number of units in the town center, if we figure out a way to, to add more healthcare services within the community. I know they've talked about the cost of the, of the units and how to limit the number of units that can be affordable. It's, it's again, it's something that I recommend that if the consultant can look at them and get back to us because I, I don't believe it will be affordable to the people that we want to serve. I, I don't think they will still be affordable to the nurses and to the teachers and to the firefighters and to the grocery store workers. They will still be way beyond their, their capacity. And I'm afraid that we have good intentions, but we will end up with capacity and more, more expensive units. It's, it's just some, something that if they can study and get back to us about. The, the timing for building the 2,000 or the 4,000 units, I know as a region and something we talked about in the past, that King County as a whole, that there is a housing, there's housing crisis, there's a housing issue. But when I hear that this might not be implemented for 20 years, that concerns me because where are these people going to go? We, we keep talking about housing crisis, but we are saying, developer, I'm going to allow you to build up to 4,000 units and you can build them in the next 20 years. Then we're not really solving the problem. We, we are only serving the, the developer, creating some backlog for them in the future to just build more units and make more money. And that, that, those are all my comments.
If I could, I, I do, first I want to mention, in, we've talked about incentives a few times, we're talking about zoning incentives. So it's that trade off essentially, it's not a financial incentive like a directly, like a TIF or anything like that. So I'd be sure about that. There, you know, you're kind of identifying one of the problems with the market right now and the reason why there is concern that only town homes could be built. You know, that it doesn't lend to affordability very well, it doesn't lend to really diversity in housing, but that's what the market favors. And that's, you know, they can make money, developers can make money off of town homes right now. And part of the concern is that the entire town center would just be town homes. And so affordability and the kind of more diverse kind of, you know, levels of income and, you know, more diverse types of housing is really, you know, what this effort is all about in promoting, you know, mixed use buildings, promoting, you know, smaller apartments, promoting condominiums, all of those things, those lend to affordability much better. And, you know, there's the issue with the market, interest rates are high, you know, and then, and then there's barriers to entry, of course, in the market, but, and then, you know, costs are, are equally as high. So there needs to be, and hopefully things will open up in the next year or so, but that's the issue right now that we're facing. One of many issues, I should say.
Ajay, go ahead.
Thank you, leader. So I have a few questions, but let me start off from where Commissioner Shum left off on this point. The question that I have is what happens if, how do we message this to, to the people? Because we talked of no change, which is basically 2,000, 2,000. We are not the audience for these things because we completely understand it, it's been drilled into our brain, this is the 2024 plan, this is where it is going and all of those things. The human mind doesn't necessarily comprehend it that way. They look at it and they think, oh, my God, there's going to be 4,000 houses over here, we're going to have a, a building barrage over here and then suddenly we will have lots of people and we don't have all the facilities to build up and all of those things. So the fact that you mentioned that it is going to be staggered out over the next 20 years is, is an important one to say that, right? But here is the other problem. If we stagger out over the next 20 years and if you just build, let's say, 50 or 100 every year, Samamish is a place where people are going to come and they're going to scoop up whatever is available. And to say that, okay, I want my child to grow up here, I want my family to thrive over here and they're going to take that up, that goes against our AMI goals of what we want to do. Yes, there will be other ways we can accommodate for it, but at the same time, that, that is going to cause some level of friction to, to get through that, that initial tussle. And then comes all the questions about, does this mean that because I'm earning more, I'm going to be penalized to not want to, to not have, be able to live over here or pay more to live over here and I cannot afford that and so on and so forth? It, it goes off from a, a social construct, which we are trying to solve for, into an economic construct, which we are not intending to bring into this equation. So, so what, is there an answer for this thing? There might not be an answer for this, but to actually say that, hey, you know what, let us, let's start by explaining to people that we're not building everything at one shot and creating a lot of strain in the system, that'll be the first thing to do.
I agree.
The second thing that they are saying is that, what they're saying is because of their livelihood at this point in time. They can come out, when I say they, I mean, the citizens of Samamish, they can come out, they can walk the streets, be able to go towards the lake, drive to the lake and then get into the water, swim and come back and, you know, have, have an afternoon in, in the, in the Samamish commons or somewhere like that and to be able to do these kinds of things. How do we sustain that and how do we help build that? We cover that in neighborhood centers that we talk about and we plan that in the neighborhood centers that we talk about, whether it's here or whether it's in the Inglewood area or wherever it is, but we don't cover it enough. So what that does is that it makes us, it makes everyone think that, okay, I have to think in the constructs of what we, what we have right now and the number 4,000, which the human mind can never forget. And I can tell it you from a mathematician's point of view, we cannot forget 4,000, people can't forget that. And they'll come back to doing this thing. So we have to talk in terms of the whole package. That's number two. Number three, I heard the term bomb cyclone over and over again. So let's consider that point. Every time there is a little bit of wind blowing over here, I hear people say this thing, oh, this is why we should have it like Klani. They just had all their electrical wiring under the ground and they did it like that. Look everywhere, we have it all over the ground, one tree falls off and people are going to be without power for days on end and not be able to get for that, which means that we're going to have additional infrastructure expense that we will have to handle in order, in, in order to get this done. infrastructure expense that we will have to handle in order, in order to get this done. Are we accounting for that? Are we doing that? And if we are accounting for that, how are we accounted for it to make sure that we have the improvement? The, the Sammamish of 2044 is not just having more housing and more apartments and all those things as we are seeing this thing, but also having the new age of electronics and electrical connections and internet and all of those things. And we don't talk enough about that. So if you can get the consultants to actually try to pictureize that, that gives people a whole picture to say, okay, this is what we are expecting. This is what we are coming to. And we're not, we're not there right now, but we'll get there. And you're not going to get there in one shot, but we're going to get there at a period of time. And those are my points.
Thank you. I wrote all of that down. I was just thinking about wireless electricity. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, yes.
And I wonder if that's going to be a new technology. I mean, it's being, they're experimenting with it.
Yes, yes.
In 20 years, maybe that's something that, and then we don't have to worry about trees falling on power lines.
Yes, exactly. Hisham would probably know about it. But I just came off a meeting today afternoon, which talks about wireless panic buttons. And I was like, nope, we're not planning wireless panic buttons. And everybody was like, why? Everybody is going wireless. Everything is going wireless. You shouldn't do this thing. And that's when I thought, oh, my God, when everything is moving to that, if you keep going back to this, and we keep going back into saying that the next wire, windstorm, you need to be prepared, go to Safeway, get all your stuff and be ready for it because the power may go out, that kind of gives a negative sticker shock about the place.
I did want to speak to, and I, I talked to the fire marshal yesterday, and, and where they have an emergency management team that we will be connecting with and kind of discussing, you know, those types of situations. I'm not sure, and we can certainly improve our messaging on, you know, the 4,000 unit and speak to things in more of a full kind of package way. I'm not sure about as far as power lines and building subdivision streets and that, and building, you know, these kinds of interior streets. We do require, and David, this is a question for you, that those, that power lines are buried. Is that right? In supply lines?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I, you know, I think a lot of that has to do with the era of construction. So, you know, we, we retrofit is really hard. You've probably heard about the Zipley experience up in, up in, you know, the north end of the city where they're trying to bring in a new fiber system. You know, during the COVID timeframe, I got a lot of very direct emails from community members asking why the city did not have adequate, you know, fiber. And then when they try and bring it in, and they have to, you know, basically put the conduit in the ground, then everyone's up in arms because now they're trenching. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a really challenging thing. So retrofit is not easy. New construction, while new construction in itself is challenging and hard, it's not hard to, to provide that, that undergrounding of the utility and accommodating even future utilities by putting additional conduit in the ground. So all new construction in the town center is, is undergrounded, I believe. And, you know, I'd have to go look, it's been, it's been a couple of days since I've driven down it. But I think fourth is all undergrounded as well. I think we put the wires underground when we did fourth. So as redevelopment happens around the city, things start to be undergrounded and those, those items start to be addressed. But if the city were to take on a project, or if the city were to collaborate with PSC to take on a project to underground the utilities around the city that are not undergrounded, it would be based on the Washington Utility and Transportation Commission tariff schedule, it basically would be back billed to the customer. So rates would spike significantly because the W U T C allows the utility to back bill the cost of undergrounding the utility infrastructure to the rate payer. So it's kind of a be careful what you ask for. And unless the state changes the tariff structure, that will always land on the benefit of the utility.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in.
Mark, could I, could I?
Oh, go ahead, John.
Take my?
You had a time to think about it.
Sorry. And I'll be somewhat brief here and take a bit of a different tact. First of all, thank you to all the folks that have provided the input either tonight or in the Jot form. And big thanks to staff and council for expanding, voluntarily expanding the, and facilitating all of the input. Because you didn't have to do as, you're not as required to do as much as you're doing. Let me start here. So a lot of the comments that I read and we've heard are about keeping things the way they are. I like, I like where I live. I like where I live. I was fortunate enough or unfortunate enough, 45 years ago, I lived in Sammamish for two years as a young adult. And if you want to talk about change, there was no Safeway, there was no QFC, there was one country market, settlers, wood floors, Gus the cat, hitching post out front. There was vehement opposition to Safeway and QFC development. Klahani was just getting started. Nobody liked it. So, you know, kind of pick your time and place. And what, as I think about that, and the decision process we have to go through here, and ultimately the council is going to have to pick a number, or maybe no change, it's, think of it as a legacy decision. And my analogy is, you've all been to Bellevue, and you're familiar with the downtown park. The downtown park acquisition was a legacy decision made by council. The community didn't like it because the council took out councilmatic bonds to buy the land from the school district. But now think today what Bellevue would be without the downtown park. So this is that sort of inflection moment for our community. And I'm not going to presuppose what the councils ultimately decide. This is a study to create data that we can examine and debate. And eventually the council will have to decide. I mean, we'll have to make some sort of recommendation. But we really need to think about it in terms of not just today, but what it looks like tomorrow. And then I'll end with one final question, probably to David, because you did a kind of good job on this one in the council meeting. What if a developer comes in and says, I'm going to pay for my own supplemental EIS because I want more units? Will the city lose control?
Yeah, so that's, this is a, something that I find a bit troubling, challenging, puzzling. I don't know the right word for it. I think it's all of those, depending on how I feel in the day, is that the town center plan, you know, the FEIS sets a, the council actually set a vision for the town center by resolution. That vision was then studied for the different alternatives and how to implement it. And they landed on an FEIS with a hybrid alternative that was adopted in 2007, that had up to 2,000 units, and it had certain building heights and a certain amount of commercial space, right? And they then proceeded to develop a plan, a subarea plan, that would identify how it all would work and fit together, following the parameters of that environmental impact statement study, or that, that final environmental impact statement. Then the next thing they did was they went about developing a code, a set of development regulations to implement the plan, right? Still following the, the bookends of what the FEIS studied. And the challenge there is that they set this 2,000 unit cap, or kind of like a, like a, you know, I wouldn't call it a goal, it's a capacity number that they set. And one would have thought that when they were developing the development regulations and the zoning that went into place to implement the plan, that it would have been pretty clear that, you know, 2,000 units is what's going to be developed by zoning. You would have tried to tailor the zoning controls, turn the dials, move the levers, as you're all familiar with, to, to really try to get about 2,000 units of density in the town center. The problem is, is, and I don't know how this came to be, I wasn't here at the time, they created this, let me find my screen here, in the zoning table here, let me see, share, let me share the right one. There we go. So this is in the, the Town Center Development Regulations, Section 2107050. And if you go down to subsection B, B4, under, there's a table here, and you can see this lists, you may not be able to see it. I'm sorry if it's too small. You may not be able to. You can see here that the maximum densities that are identified here are, you know, in TCA is 40 dwelling units per acre, TCB is 20 dwelling units per acre, eight, and then the TCD, which is not residential, this is the civic area, and then TCE oddly is one dwelling unit per acre. That's the, the reserve zone, so to speak. But if you look down here, down at the bottom, and you see here, these are footnotes right here, footnote one, two, and three, right? And these footnotes are supposed to apply all the way across the table here. That's how this table is constructed. So if you go down here to the bottom of the table, and you read footnote two, I think this is really worth noting. When they set this code, and this isn't, this hasn't changed since it was adopted on its origin, right? This is the, the note that was put in place then. It says here, maximum density means the absolute maximum density allowed for all incentives and bonus units are added, you know, after all units are added. And then it goes on to say, and I think this is the thing that I found the most confounding, is units purchased through the city's TDR program do not count toward maximum residential density. The number of allowed units on a property may exceed the maximum density allowed, the maximum allowed density by the number of TDRs purchased. And so that, that presents a bit of a challenge, because now you basically are saying that under footnote two, which applies across all zones, that density is unlimited. So if you, if you start to think about the different scenarios that can unfold from that, it's that, well, there's, there's now two things that are controlling. So this is a legislatively adopted set of regulations that have been in place for, you know, what, 15 years now. And as part of that, then to implement it, there are administrative tools that have been set up. The first administrative tool is the, the EIS, that's a administrative, and I use the word artificial, and some people got upset with me the, after that the other night. So I want to be careful what I mean by that, is that, that there's a, it's an administrative tool, the 2,000 unit cap that limits the amount that can be built. The zoning allows for a lot more. It's already, the capacity's there. But we have this, this administrative tool that is limiting the legislatively allowed density. Then the other part of it is, is another administrative tool, and this is the city's TDR programs. So we have, we have a, an interlocal agreement with King County by which the city has preliminary, you know, the, the first agreement is we are, we are purchasing 70, or that developers may purchase from King County up to 70 TDR credits from the, the certain sending areas, the Emerald Necklace around the city. You know, it's a great program, land conservation program. And that, that was then transfer, you know, the, you basically take those 70 credits, then you multiply them depending on the receiving zone. So you can get, you know, if it's, say it was, you know, five credits, you can get 350 units out of that. Well, then we have kind of an unlimited capacity in the city's in-city TDR program. If it economically made sense for a developer, if a developer were to find a, a land, a land acquisition that they were going to put in conservation, now highly unlikely given land economics. But it's to say that it is possible that a developer could find additional density through a TDR program that is in excess of the, the maximum density allowed. And they could apply for a development permit, and they could propose a supplemental environmental impact statement on their own, using the code that's in place today, to go ahead and continue to develop. Another scenario that I highlighted the other night is, and this is again unlikely, is that a developer could come in and say that, you know, that the city has granted the legislative, legislatively granted zoning capacity to build more, and they want to build more in that area, but the city is using an administrative tool, which is in a, you know, I don't know, it's hierarchy, on a hierarchy, it's a lower level tool to, to restrict development that is granted through legislative action. And that could result in a lawsuit, maybe the Growth Management Shareings Board or something, that could end up in the city possibly renegotiating its interlocal agreement with King County to get additional TDRs. So the, the challenge that we have is that when they put the 2,000 unit cap in place through the study, the hybrid alternative with the FEIS, I understand what that means. But somehow they were disjointed when they were developing the zoning, and they didn't properly calibrate the zoning because of footnotes like that and some other things that are in the code. And there's actually a lot more density allowed in the code than what the, the FEIS from 2007 actually contemplated. And I'm not trying to dismiss the severity of, you know, going up and the significance of going up. And I want to be clear about that. But what I'm trying to highlight is, is that it's not so simple that you have this administrative cap that, that, that says you can't go beyond 2,000 units, or that you have an ILA with King County that only highlights that the first 70 units are, are being purchased. There's a lot more going on here, and we're trying to find our, our way through it. We do know that the current code, as it's written, and, and what's left in the 2,000 units is only going to get us, I think, as someone said, 10% at 80%, and that's all that's going to get us.
If I could add to that, in regard to a developer taking that step of amending the, or providing a supplemental EIS, it would be a very piecemeal effort. And that's different than what we're doing here, where we're, it's a more comprehensive effort, and we'll evaluate the impacts in a comprehensive way. The, if a developer were to do that, and let's say in 10 or 20 years, we get to the 2,000 limit, and this triggers that SEIS, you know, process for the developer, because the city didn't do, do that. We just went with the, you know, the, the existing condition scenario. If it's updated, if the, they take that on, and if it's a five acre property, they're only going to look at the impacts for that five acre property. And then the next developer will have to do that, too. And so it's not a comprehensive review. It's incremental. And I don't think that's helpful to this overall effort. We talked about looking at the full package. I mean, that's something that we, as the city, we have the opportunity to do that here.
Mark, can I ask you a question, or can I follow another John's? You can get back to, because you, you brought up something interesting. You said that if it is a, is EIS or SEIS done by private consultant, private developer, the, the scope is going to be limited. What is a common practice and a typical like this in other cities? Is the city, the jurisdiction is funding the project, or the developer is funding the project?
Well, our, our process, and I think you would find in most cities, that it is available to the developer to apply for that, but the city would actually undertake. They would pay for it. The developer would pay for it. We would be the lead agency, and we would actually-
If you're the lead agency, don't you have the authority basically to dictate the extent of the coverage?
It would only be germane to the developer's project. Yeah, it's, it's a, this is a, a non-project SEIS where the developer would take on a project related SEIS.
Sorry, John.
And that's what I mean by incremental. Yeah.
John, anything else? Okay, I'll try to make my quick questions, comments quick. So you said, one thing that'll be helpful is some suggestions about what might inform us as we move through this process. I'll just, I, for everybody else, I had submitted some written comments. I won't go through those, but I'll hit on a couple of these building heights. I- And I included these in my email, I went and just did some Google search and looked at buildings 150 feet. And I'm trying to keep an open mind about a lot of this stuff, but I'd suggest everybody go do the exact same thing and see what 150-foot-tall buildings look like. And I think for us and for others, it would be helpful to provide some images of what we might be talking about, and maybe a map showing where we're talking about, because when you say Town Center A, it seems like, you know, some people know exactly what that is, and some people are, I had to look on the map and try to figure out where that was. So, those two things, visual, would be visuals that would help. And I also think maybe some discussion about, you know, what is really stacking of a 150-foot building likely to look like, what are we getting here? We're talking about 150 feet of apartments, or is there some mix? You know, we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but what might it be?
Can I add real quick? That whole discussion is also, you know, kind of footed in that it would be exchanged, this additional height would be in exchange for open space. That the building footprint would decrease if it could go higher.
Yes, and-
That's been, and?
Everybody hears that, but until they see a picture, most people have no clue what you're talking about.
I get that, I just wanted to throw that out there.
And I would say, for me at least, it will be hard to convince me that that's a good idea for Sammish. So, traffic, I don't think that this project includes budget for some of this, but I think it would be very helpful to have some more real-world data, which, I don't know, like you say, that's probably a bigger exercise than what's realistic here, but, you know, how much traffic does Sky Apartments actually generate, and Met Market actually generate? And, let's see, apartments across the 228, how much, you know, how many units are there, and how many trips are those generating right now? And then expand that to apply it to an additional 1,000 or additional 2,000 units, because there's a lot of science around this, and I've lived through this for eight years now almost. There's a lot of science, but I don't know that any of that science is relevant to Sammish. Some of it might be, and actually, sometimes the science seems to contradict itself. So, rather than arguing over things and whether they're real or not, it'd be nice to have some real data somehow.
Yes, and we can provide that, it's all been modeled, we just need to consider different scenarios.
Yes, and? I've heard years of modeling discussion, and I, and many people in this community don't believe that the models are relevant to Sammish.
Okay.
Because, you know, that's why we continue to have so many people with comments about the traffic, because people don't believe it.
Okay.
And if we had some hard data with loops across the driveway into Sky Apartments, and loops across the drive, I don't know, something like that, that counted, how many trips are we really actually getting on a PM peak hour? A lot of those, and how many units is it? And then it's a lot harder to argue with the outcome, because right now, there's a traffic study out there that says we can put 10,000 units in Town Center, and it'll have no effect on traffic.
Right.
I don't buy that for a second, nobody else will either, right? So, real-world data, even though that may be impractical, would be fantastic to nail down this discussion.
You're talking about ground truthing to calibrate the model, you know, I think we can do that. Or, no, I'm sorry, I'm spending other people's money.
Yes.
I will look into that.
That's why I say, I recognize what I'm suggesting may not be within the budget. This whole discussion about evacuation and emergency response planning, I think that that should be a whole separate topic outside of this conversation. However, maybe for this conversation, what would be useful is some sort of, I don't know what this would look like, but a comparison between if we build 2,000, if we end up having 2,000 units built, and this much commercial space built, and if we have 4,000 and this much commercial space, or maybe an in-between scenario, because the comments are a reaction response to emergencies that have happened elsewhere, sort of with the assumption that adding an additional 2,000 units would create the problem. But my suspicion is if we looked at that, we would see that the problem may be exacerbated by 10% or 5% or something, but the root cause of the problem is really just need to do more thorough emergency planning, not necessarily that this project, you see what I'm saying, the conversation should be about the delta, not about the issue. I think for affordability, we should have some scenarios to try to, in our minds, ground what that would mean. So if we add another, you know, 1,000 units, what does that mean for, what kinds of units is that, could that be? And what did the affordability look like? And if we had 2,000 more, just some scenarios with some numbers would be helpful. I also think as a caution, that we are talking a lot about 2,000 dwelling units, residential units, and we're kind of ignoring the commercial and retail that goes with it, and we should be careful not to do that.
Yes.
Because some people care, and everybody should be thinking about it. And I know you guys will in your study, but we just need to talk about it, not get sidetracked. I'm also concerned a bit that we're so focused on these two issues, building height and adding 2,000 units, that all the rest of this stuff might get plowed under. And then in the end, we pick scenario do nothing, whatever that is. And in the meantime, we have all this bulk of other code revisions and form-based codes, and, you know, to me, it feels like that's 80% of what's going on, and we should pay attention to it, but we're going to end up consuming all of our time on 20%. So if there's any way to help us not do that, or be more careful about it, I mean, like, I would, I really am not convinced about 150 feet, I'd like your team to not spend any time on it, because I don't think it's going to end up anywhere anyway. So I hate to spend a bunch of time and a bunch of our time, you know, over something that is unlikely to be an outcome. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's my perception.
It's a very good point.
So why should we spend all of our time and resources on something that's, you know, we should hit that hard, maybe get a clear indication whether it's going to go forward or not, and then spend those valuable resources on things that are going to actually end up making a huge difference, which is the code revisions and, you know, the modifications we're talking about to update things. Okay, that's it, sorry, I talked a little fast. You make me the timekeeper and I talk fast.
Mark, you didn't mention my hardware store.
Where is that?
Honestly, John, my honest opinion is that I will probably not live long enough to see Ace Hardware in Sammish again, I wish I could, but if it happens, I'll take my son and we'll go walk through the aisles, and it'll be very nostalgic, but at this point, I've given up on that happening in my lifetime. So we're pretty close to run out of time, so, and you want to go ahead with a couple more?
Yeah, a couple of questions, I want to follow up on Mike's question about the benefit to the community. Let me give you some ideas that you may want to kind of think about it, and then add, basically give the information to the public. We didn't talk that much about financial incentive, knowing that the city right now, they've got a lot of projects on the books, so we don't have the funding to do it. So the question is that, is it a benefit, but we don't know how we can quantify, by increasing the housing from 2,000 to 4,000, what would be the implication of bringing more funds to do the capital projects and infrastructure improvement? That is something that you probably should be looking at.
That's part of the scope, and that's something that was included in the original Town Center plan, so.
And also the fact that right now, if I'm not mistaken, something like 80% of the city budget is from the property tax. So by having more development, particularly housing unit, that would bring a little bit more money, because right now, city is looking at increasing the utility tax, so if you have more funding, other diverse form of funding to fund the capital project, that would be benefit to the community.
You're evaluating revenue streams for-
Right, I'm kind of basically following up on Mark saying that what is a benefit to me, these are the things that you should be hanging out. On the transportation side also, if I'm not mistaken, both the 2007, as well as the one that you're going to be looking at, because I'm assuming what you're going to be looking at is a conceptual infrastructure roadway network, as is shown in the TMP, that actually brings capacity as far as the roadway capacity and intersection improvement along the 228, they bring up actually another intersection crossing to 228 replacing the Main Street.
Right.
So that could be, again, back to the benefit, that would be beneficial. The 150-foot building, is there any way that you want to quantify that the city go along with that? What would be the implication of corresponding changes in open space? Let's say that right now we have the 60, what is the maximum height now?
75.
So can we say that if you're going from 70 to 150, the open space is right now X is going to be Y? So people can see the corresponding benefit on that. A lot of people brought up the comparison between the Bellevue Square and what has been proposed that is, looks like, a question that you don't have to answer, probably David can answer that. What is the square footage of the existing mid-market and the existing part of the development on the corner of the 4th and 228, what is the square footage?
The commercial components?
Total.
Yeah.
You have total, and you have some offices, and you have medical building.
Could it be more than 20,000 to 30,000?
Oh, really? That little?
But, let's hear from David.
I'd have to look that number up, I don't, fortunately, I don't carry that around in my mental rolodex.
Because I was going to use that as an example, so people can comprehend the size of the-
Well, the, you know, the Safeway Center is, I think, around 120-
Safeway, we're not talking with Safeway?
Well, I'm just, for comparison, Safeway is, I think, around 120,000 square feet. That whole center, that, you know, that strip center.
Yeah, but if you look at the metropolitan market and all these high-rise buildings that area, is much more dense.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just for comparison.
And also, by increasing, we really didn't cover that issue. Are we assuming that we're going to be maintaining the square footage of the non-residential use? The retail is going to stay the same? We are only talking about increasing the dwelling units, is that all?
Yeah, I think that's the case, yes.
No change in the other part?
David, I'm not aware of that discussion, but.
Yeah, commercial was not part of the scope that was listed.
But what is the answer, the commercial square footage is going to stay the same?
That is my understanding, yes.
As, the same as what's in the current plan? Yep.
And the last thing, back to the transportation, Matt, you read, one of the comment was the lack of adequate transit. And I think that we got to remind the folks that when you have, transit is depending on basically high-density development, residential development. So the more people that there are dense in that area, that creates a market for the transit agency to provide the service. So if that goes from 2,000 to 4,000, you have the basis to go back to the King County and say, hey, listen, the service that you provide in one route every hour headway is not going to work for, that's going to bring more benefit to the community as far as the transit services.
Yeah, that's a great point, thank you.
Thank you.
Could someone extend the meeting, let's say, 20 minutes?
I extend, propose extending the meeting by 20 minutes.
Second? Let's move it in second, and to extend to 8:50, all of us, if you ever say aye, aye, opposed, no? Okay, we're kind of running short on time, are any last-minute questions or comments for Matt and David? Great, thanks, this will be an interesting discussion. I thought we were done with all this last year, but I guess we're going to do some more this year. All right, let's move on to agenda-related public comment, seven minutes per person. Who would like to make a gender-related public comment? Paul in the room?
Excellent meeting, planning commissioners, staff, this is Paul Stickney, Sammish. My earlier comment was scripted, the same comment I gave to City Council Tuesday. My comments here were taken some notes as the meeting went on. There's a fair amount of things that could be covered, so I may send some stuff in, because there's a lot of important things here. So I'll look over my notes, and depending on how it all flows, I may or may not have time to cover things. The, I've been involved in this since before Sammish was a city. I could comment a lot on the Town Center process, if you ever want to talk to me about that, I'm happy to meet and chat about that. But, over the last year, I've commented many times, and I think all of you will admit, and pardon my swerve, no, I'll change it to a heck, there's been a heck of a lot that has come through the planning process in the last year, many major topics. So a few points about what I've been working on recently. Citywide housing, M, you know, the balance, has been interweaved with a whole bunch of other stuff, so I'm going to repeat a couple things. All the numbers that I turned in the last year, and I'm not going to talk the numbers tonight, but they're all on the record. I'm not afraid to talk about them, but we don't have time to talk about them. The numbers I've turned in for the recommendation to add to market rate housing for A, B, and C housing is totally bottom-up and extremely low relative to what the, quote, D-housing people need over time that want to stay in Sammish and workforce housing for unplanned and planned changes. When you look over all the numbers, it's pretty staggering. I'm wholly talking about a tiny part to start to meet in this comp plan cycle, so we can build more units from 500 to 14, not to attract people, but to let people stay. And I have a whole lot of information on that, but I don't have time for that tonight. Happy to meet and talk about that, and I'm going through something on that now, and I will send that in as part of a future public comment. It's been great to revisit it and to steal two words from Matt Brandmeier, thoughtful and complete, lots of detail. So I still stress greatly that you can quantify housing need factors. You can get a sense of where things are. Not a complaint, but I'll state it as an interesting fact. Most jurisdictions limit their study of housing needs based on a county and state process to a category of 100 to 120% AMI. So what you have is a supercategory above that. In Sammish, that's 85 or 90% of our households. You can't tell jack poop from one category at that level. It is masking massive shortages and even more massive excesses. There's a way to get much closer. I'm not saying perfection, that's the last thing I'm saying, just a heck of a lot more than here. And I'm not complaining, I'm stating. The housing needs analysis did not quantify factors or set rough ranges of need in those price ranges. Neither did the housing diversification toolkit, neither did the original Town Center plan, nor has any comp plan. It's time to do it, we can get relatively close, closer than we are now. And my goal isn't to make the numbers high, but it's to recognize what the real range of need is, so we don't miss an opportunity to meet authentic, bottom-up, housing needs for those that want to stay in Sammish over time when they sell the big houses. Now, there's a lot more to talk about on that as well. And I appreciate honestly Commissioner Baughman's comment about not thinking, we can't do 10,000 housing units. I want to talk a little bit about the two Farren Pierce studies that I had commissioned in 2015 and 16. Those are linked in the comment I sent City Council on Tuesday, and linked in your council. Read them, go slow. When I hired Farren Pierce, there's a few things I want to speak the unspoken on. Those projects are modest and low in their recommendations, not high. And I'm only going to talk about a couple snippets here. I won't be able to get into the weeds, it'll probably leave a lot of questions, but let's sit down and talk about this. First, let's talk about, when the EIS was done for Town Center in 2007, all 3,500 of the King County pipeline houses were constructed. The EIS plans for the comp plan, the first comp plan, which planned for 3,000 houses, Sammish didn't build more than that. It's just as legitimate today as it was then. The Farren Pierce study, there's a really interesting story about how I learned about them, with a whole lot of topics behind it, not for tonight, but happy to meet and talk about it, because it matters. Let me tell you what matters more. When I hired Farren Pierce, which are renowned, they studied 260 centers in 2013 and 14. And they were objective, the EPA used them for a nationwide tool on studying internalization factors. The EPA used them for a nationwide tool on studying internalization factors in centers. I told them, assume no transit in these studies. None ever comes. Leave it as is. I told them, if you could do a range and on one side, make the study developer-friendly, and on the other side, all city, I said, put it at the 75 percentile for the city. Why? Because when somebody really gets in and understands what's there, it can unlock all of this to, if the community decides to put extra units in Town Center, they can be done without increasing traffic. And that was on the preferred alternative. On the commercial alternative, it would be way higher. Let's sit down and talk about the facts because I don't need to be right. I'm a what's right person, not a who's right, but let's at least get to common ground on what's really happening with those studies. Appreciate the chance to talk.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, I found that quite interesting. I don't know how you can add 2,000 places and have 2,000 units and however many people it is and however many cars that is in the very center of the city, which goes up and down 228, there's all the main arterials from the center of the city, and not have an impact on traffic. It's impossible. It's just common sense. The other thing is, I do remember that study coming out a long time where people put in what they would want, and I don't think it was ever weighed against, if you're saying you want affordable housing, what does it mean on all your other answers with the parks and everything else? You're trying to do everything to meet every one of those top ones, but I don't think it was really thought through and I say, I want affordable housing. Well, it was my own house. Maybe I just wanted my taxes to be cheaper, you know, if I would have picked that. So I don't think it really, they're really weighing what that means. And if you put these 2,000 units in, who even says, you even know who's going to live in them? How you going to, you couldn't even possibly restrict who gets it. I'd heard mentioned last time, the people who live here now may want to downsize and go there, they're soon enough full. They're already full. I'm almost positive, if you put 2,000 units up here cheap, they will be full. There's no doubt in my mind because of what the environment is here, what you get for what you're paying for up here. And when you're trying to accommodate affordable housing and getting what you pay for up here and keeping what you have up here, it just doesn't add up. And you will constantly be fighting that conundrum. It will never be resolved because ever since I've lived here, the housing and the taxes have only gone one way, up. When I first moved in here, just to kind of give you an idea, our house, I think we were paying somewhere around $3,000 a year in property tax. Now I just saw the bill be 15,000. So that's even probably over an inflation rate if you went by the years. And I don't see that changing because only a certain amount of people can really afford what we have up here. And that's just some, that's a life decision on whether you want to make that happen or not. And you're, when you get down there at the other end of life, sometimes you have decisions to make. Like, I can't really stay here because my kids are gone, or I don't have a reason for it, or I want other stuff to replace, or I just fact point the money out of my house. So I don't think that study that was done a long time ago where they listed all the things on what people wanted, it was always going to say affordable housing. And I'm not really sure how you can make sure the fire department people are in there, the nurses are in there. I would say, just take a good look at the Highlands and what happened there. I mean, I want to tell you how sweet it was, since I got to use the Swedish hospital almost when it was first built, I thought I was going into a luxury hotel. It was just unbelievable. There was nobody there, you walked in, they took you back to the emergency room, and now it's just a totally different scenario. And we also lost there a great view. If you drove down that main drive in front of the, you could look out over Bellevue and that's all gone because they put those homes in there. And we actually look at the city center here, when it was decided to take it out of Safeway, this was a great view, looking downtown Bellevue, now it's gone. So I'm not really sure that the underlying things we're trying to solve for really work out. I think when somebody weighs against, do I want my kids to be in an environment that's family-friendly and I'm willing to pay extra and I want the bigger lot because of what it brings? And that's what I was trying to say, I noticed we were talking about these neighborhood community centers and that. Before, people used to open up their homes and their kids used to actually play in their own neighborhoods. And now you're trying to create another scenario, even in the Class D-type zoning. So I, I don't really envy you, but I see a lot of conflicting things you're trying to solve for. And one reason you're trying to solve for this, but it's going to create this other problem. Because I've here long, I've lived here long enough to know, it, when you add density, the density just keeps increasing. There's no way to, there's no way to stop it. It just keeps going and then you're, you'll have, you'll have all that stuff gone. I did see here that they have 2,200 students, supposedly at Skyline now, like there's a number that's something magic about how well they're getting taught, which I'm not 100% sold on, that that's legit. Because actually, I actually went to a big high school and, and when I grew up in Southern California, and that was a private school, Catholic private school, but we had a huge student population and we didn't have near the amenities that you have at Skyline and maybe Eastlake's the same, the football field and stuff like that. The other things that they've added, they're, they're super nice, what do they call it? Student, um, stage, their stage thing that has the retunda in there, very impressive. But I guess I'm just, and I, I'm tying this also to the recent thing, the recent thing where they, they shot down again, the increasing of taxes to pay for the schools even though there was misleading information on that. People just don't want it. They don't want their taxes going up and they, and they don't want to bring on more stuff that's going to increase the density and take away this Sammamish lifestyle. So I was kind of interested, just listening to you guys, so you can't really tell on some of you where you really are on that, but I think that's going to be a sticking point. And I know we're, we thought we were past that in 2007, 2008, but I can already see it's, it's growing steam again, like, okay, what's really going on here? Because when Sammamish was actually became a city, the assumption was we were going to control our own destiny and we were going to be able to keep this Sammamish lifestyle we have up here, and instead it's worked against us. That's my observation on that. But I really, if you just look at Issaquah Highlands and what Issaquah was doing, and they're even better equipped. And the most amazing city that I've seen that really pulled it all off and outsmarted everybody was Mercer Island. They added all their density right next to that freeway and they were even selective on what kind of density they were increasing. They actually increased retirement density, the best kind of people you can have in there and not affect the people in the, in the D-class and, and the, and the conflict between getting some of those other groups in here and, and a higher number where you get more kids with the mufflers modified and stuff like that. Before, parents used to have a lot more community, even within your neighborhood. You didn't worry about your kid getting out of line because somebody else would let you know. Now, we've seen this getting less and less of that. So, oh, thank you. One second. Bye. Have a good night.
Thanks, Tom. Do we have anybody online?
We have a couple of people waiting on line. Heather, I am promoting you now.
I, I heard you guys talking about building 50 to 100 units at a time for the next 20 years, but then you also talk about 10 to 12-story buildings, which what I assume would be built all in one. So if you're building that story at a, unless you're building it a story at a time, that would probably be, what, 500, 1,000 units or more at a time? So that would be a very large population growth. So I, I think that, yes, maybe over history, we've only added 50 to 100, but when we're talking large buildings like that, it would be a large growth and a large stretch for us, especially for the, the traffic and for everything else. Also, talking to the footnote scenario, if those no longer, if they don't reflect concurrency, should they not be amended ASAP to, to close that loophole? And if, in your worst-case scenario, if you were to add this, if we were to add these 4,000 units, does that loophole go away or just, we had 4,000 units and then those TRDs still can come in? So now we have 6,000, do we become even more dense? So how does adding 4,000 or the capacity for 4,000, if we, you know, if this is eventually, this scope is turned into, we allow 4,000, how does this prevent that scenario is what I'm asking? Because it's pretty scary scenario that, what the former, the previous speaker was talking about is that we incorporated to, you know, to, so that we could, we could, we could choose when we incorporated, and it does not seem like we are in control anymore. And then, again, this all seems to be a 20-year project and 20 years of headache and construction and gridlock that we as taxpayers would in effect be subsidizing, including, it seems like, the study that we're doing right now or you're about to begin right now, rather than the developer. It seems like the concern seems to be about the developer profiting rather than saving money for the taxpayer. And we continue to be focusing on the developer carrots rather than, and which seems to, the effect seems to be giving the current constituents the stick. And so again, what and how does this benefit current residents who will have to start paying for, you know, your utility taxes and the metro levy coming soon? And going back to what the previous speaker was talking about, yes, we all want affordable housing, but not at the expense of our safe, our schools, our environment. I think you need to go back and maybe we need to, to survey the city and maybe, and someone I think spoke earlier in the meeting, that this should go to a vote of the people and maybe these need to be reprioritized. What are our priorities right now as a community? Because I would imagine, right now in this economic environment, that making sure that we aren't taxing people out of homes is probably higher up. So I, I urge you guys to be, please be sensitive. Ten companies right now are laying off people, on fixed incomes are experiencing a death of 1,000 cuts with levies, utility taxes, soaring food costs, raised property values and the property taxes. I could totally empathize with the guy that spoke before me because our tax would be, I think when we moved here, our taxes were 6,000 and last, last week we got 15,000, I think 900. So ours is almost, you know, two and a half times. So, and I'm not so worried about me, but like when we're getting to retirement age, some people would like to actually retire in their homes. But there are people that are being taxed out of their homes. There's been newscasts, news stories, you should reach out and look at, where like teachers are being taxed, taxed out of their homes. And there is a reason why the ISD bond failed because there's real tax fatigue right now. So we're using all these tax incentives to fund these affordable housings, and I think this, there will be severe backlash for this. So I, I really hope you're sensitive to this and realize that this might not be the priority. And again, I think affordable housing has its place, but I don't think it's here in the center, and I don't think that the focus should be on making it profitable for the developer. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Anybody else?
Yes, Mary, I am moving you up to panelists.
This is Mary Victor. Thanks for a really, really great meeting with excellent comments, terrific input, thoughtful questions and from everybody involved. I wanted to speak just a little bit, the, the city currently has a fiscal imbalance because we are 85% single-family and 15% the other stuff. And even the water district is having revenue troubles and issues, so they're doing what they can. They do plan far enough ahead, there will be water and sewer for everybody, including King County things that they've done. So that's not an issue, but if you don't have any other way to get money, you, you have to tax more. And when we tax more, increase the 1% property tax, it's only giving the city $300,000 per year because it's only on a portion of it, the city's portion, it's not on the schools and everything else. And then also, the utility tax will bring in $11 million for the city, but it doesn't even catch up, which is why you have to have the parks, the Metropolitan Park District. So there isn't really a solution out of it. We've got there because we only grew one way and there's only one solution that we have, and it really isn't enough. You need to have more units, you can tax more, you can have more revenues. And the people that come in that live in higher-density units, they don't have the same number of cars. They may or not have children that need to go to school. They can fill jobs in the area, including medical and essential services that we need and, and like teaching and, and police and fire. There are ways out of it, but we, we have to do what, different than what we've been before because we are where we are. We don't want to cut staff, we don't want to cut services, but we need more, so you just keep taxing. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. I did want to speak a little bit on transfer of development rights, also known as TDRs. Transfer of development rights are a thing King County wants every city to have and King County has, so that you can take areas that you're not supposed to develop, like critical areas with steep slopes and a lot of trees where wildlife goes and it streams. You're not supposed to be building those. In fact, the city's supposed to subtract out those lands and do their growth numbers not using them. And what is happening is 1889 Inglewood was platted as a single paper plot and has lots as small as 2,500 square feet. I live in Tamrac, which was platted by the Assessor in 1964, where the lots are all under a quarter acre and there's over 200 of them. Those areas, like they've been developed, they've had cumulative impacts for development, and they're, they're overwhelming. We don't have the utilities that everyone else does because they're older historic flats and the city's even made special rules for them and done some special code. But what we have is, we have vacant lots that people, oh, I can buy a cheap lot and I can build, but they don't understand how terribly hard it is. Most of the lots where I live, if anybody tries to buy them at a low price or even a higher price, they end up foreclosing or not being able to have it done, or they start the project and it stalls out in three, four, five years. It forecloses one to four times and 10 years later, we don't have any trees, like we're losing, there's, there's an example in Inglewood, one lot where 45 trees were removed. There's an example where I live in Tamrac, where there's been 48 trees removed, too many trees removed. The, the, the foundation is stalled out and it just sits there and there's no way out. So in order to protect, identify and protect critical areas, which was required from the Clean Water Act and into 1990, everything was mapped, you're supposed to not develop in those areas. If people have a lot, you can't tell them they can't build, you give them a reasonable use exception. So we made the code so those houses will be smaller. If you'll actually have a working, functional transfer of development rights program, people will buy up those lots and save those 45 trees per a single quarter acre. So two, two, two houses purchased, instead of getting an RUE, reasonable use exception as a transfer of development, right? You could save 90 trees, just like that. And they need to go in areas that are willing to take density or central areas or sub, sub, sub-areas, and Town Center is one of those. So I think that's really, really important to understand. And David, Director Pyle, had spoken about the transfer development rights program for King County. They offered seven, he said 70, I thought it was 75, but I haven't looked it up. So 70 units. So they said, we drew an urban growth area boundary around the city of Sammamish. It needs to be urban. And then on the outside, where unincorporated King County is, we have these large parcels of land, and if a developer buy them, they put a conservation easement on it and then they can transfer a development right in. So that originally didn't sell any, then it sold 22. You needed to use 20 before you could use any others. So developer put a first right of refusal on the other ones, they've used those now, and they bought all 70 or 75 of them. There is an in-city TDR program which exists in the current code. However, it's very restrictive where it can come from. The reason people aren't using it is there's no place to put that development, it needs to go into a center area, ideally Town Center, because that's where the utilities and the roads and everything are for, for higher-density development. So I believe the current code, I don't have it in front of me, but from what I recall, if you're in the Inglewood sub-basin, which is part of Town Center and wider, or if you're in the Thompson sub-basin, which is another part of Town Center or wider, but those don't include Inglewood and Tamrac, which are the historic flats, which are just below those on the steeper slopes. So no one in Inglewood and Tamrac, where we definitely could use TDRs, can do a single trade in. trade-in because there's no interest, because there is nowhere to put it. So we just need very small code changes. I put it in as a docket item in 2019. I was told that we couldn't do geological hazards until we had money with the critical areas in 2024. So that docket has been waiting. It's supposed to be on the work plan this year. We need to update those small pieces of code so that we actually can have people that would purchase the—the—the development right and then transfer it into a central area, perhaps Town Center. And they will sell. They will go, but you need to have a—a code that works, a program that works. It is not a large code change. With all the other stuff you're doing with Town Center, it's a very small portion, but it's very critical in order to save the critical areas that you're not supposed to be developing in anyway. So I wanted to cover that just because I've been hanging around in meetings for a really long time, and it's super-important, and I'm glad to see it's on the work plan. And then just to review some of the numbers that Paul Stickney talked about. The first comprehensive plan for the city was adopted in 2003. It called for 3,000 single-family homes. And those homes, which were all King County's pipeline housing, were built in Sammamish by that time, meaning anything that King County had permitted before the city became incorporated. In 2007, the EIS for Town Center did have its transportation studies and comprehensive transportation element. And in that, the EIS preferred alternatives so you could add between 3,650 and 8,000 units over and above the 2,000 that were planned, which means you could have 5,650 to 10,000 housing units in Town Center. So these are studies that have already been done. Farren Pierce is a great traffic studier. They are nationally known. They were used by the city, and they were used, as Paul Stickney had mentioned. So I had written that in my comment that I had emailed on Tuesday, and I hope that you'll read it. This is very important stuff, and we need to build right in the way so that we can all succeed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else? No. All right. Evan, Matt, anything else for this evening?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Would someone move to adjourn? Second— It's been moving to second to adjourn, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I—I just want to mention that I'm not going to be here for the March—I believe that the next one is March 5th. I'm not going to be for—for that meeting, neither for the 20th. You're going to—you're going to—you're going to zoom in from Australia. I'm going to zoom in from Amsterdam.